Good afternoon, can the hosts please start the stream? Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council stated meeting. At this time, with all panelists, please turn on your videos. To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices to vibrate or silent. Thank you for your cooperation. We are ready to begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all cell phones, all electronic devices to vibrate. Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, and welcome, everyone, to the stated meeting of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Majority Leader Keith Powers wants to thank everyone for joining us and tuning in. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website. How do I have a city clerk?
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please call the roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles. Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Present.
Botcher. Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban. Carr. De La Rosa.
Present.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Present.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Here. Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Jose.
Present.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Here.
Velazquez. Vernikoff.
Here. Sorry, that's Velazquez, not Vernikoff.
Uh-oh, okay, thank you. Vernikoff. Williams. Wan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Morelli.
Blessed and present.
Powers.
I missed that one, but I am here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We are now...
Ariola, here.
Oh.
Thank you.
We also have... Mr. Clerk, could you call attendance for Councilmember Vernikoff as well? Or not her attendance? Okay, thank you. We're now going to have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Luisa Martinez of Saint Stevens English United Methodist Church located at one forty-four West Two Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Street in Manhattan.
All rise. Let us pray. Precious God, we have come this far by faith, and we praise you. And we invite you, Holy Spirit, to be with us in this place. Eterno Dios, te damos gracias por la oportunidad que nos brindas de congregarnos en este lugar, donde un grupo de hombres y mujeres deseosos por ayudar a sus comunidades trabajan incansablemente. Te rogamos, Señor, que tú le des su apoyo. Derrama tu santo espíritu en este lugar, y que todo lo que se vaya a tratar en este lugar, en este día, Señor, tenga el sello de tu espíritu santo. Te rogamos, oh Dios, por los que están en emidencia, tal como lo menciona la Biblia. Ayúdale y sosténgale para que todas las ideas y proyectos puedan llegar a un feliz término. It's in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Martinez, and thank you for being with us today. I'm going to now ask Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you so much, Mr. Majority Leader. A few words on Dr. Reverend Luisa Martinez, who hails from my district, who was born in Sanchez Samana, Dominican Republic, in nineteen forty-six. Since her early years under the guidance of her mother, she began participating in community organizing and church ministry at the Iglesia Evangelica Dominicana, where she became a youth leader in her spare time and taught literacy skills and after school for her community. With her ministerial work, Dr. Reverend Luisa Martinez participated in numerous grassroots organizations with the Latino community, civic and professional organizations. With the United Methodist Conference, Reverend Martinez is a member of the Human Rights Association of the Dominican Republic. She has been a source of light and blessing for my community, for myself personally, and after her retirement, Reverend Martinez continues to participate in community organizing and advocacy fundraising and mentoring new young pastors and young people in my community on Two Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Street, the Marble Hill section of my district. We are honored to have Dr. Reverend Luisa Martinez as our invocational speaker today. Mr. Majority Leader, Madam Speaker, we thank Dr. Reverend Luisa Martinez for being here, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Rosa. We're now going to have the adoption of the City Council minutes by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, June second, two thousand and twenty-two, and June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted as printed.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. We're now going to go to messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M seventy-nine, Declaration of Capital Financing Need.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Preconsidered M eighty through preconsidered M eighty-two, various appointments.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
We'll go now to petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We're now going to have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder, masks are strongly encouraged to be worn throughout the stated meeting in council chambers. We are currently experiencing a sixth COVID wave, and infection rates in New York City have surpassed fifteen percent citywide, with some neighborhoods seeing positivity rates above twenty percent. Please take the necessary precautions, get tested often, and if you have not done so already, please get vaccinated and boosted so you're protected from the worst impacts of COVID. Since the last time we met, the United States Supreme Court has made several rulings that have made us less safe, stripped away rights that we have counted on for decades, and cast our future in doubt. The Supreme Court's decisions on guns, abortion rights, environmental protection, and a range of civil rights have taken our country backwards at a time when we can least afford it. Our nation has been tormented by the scourge of gun violence, yet the court decided to strike down New York's century-old gun law, putting all of us at greater risk. From Highland Park, Illinois, Uvalde, Texas, to neighborhoods across our city, we are continuing to experience violence that inflicts harm and trauma on our communities. We must come together as a city and as a country to bring an end to the dangerous proliferation of guns, provide care and healing to help victims of violence recover, and invest in the health and well-being of our neighbors. On the federal level, Congress finally passed bipartisan gun safety measures that will ultimately save lives. While much more is needed to curb this crisis, it is a step in the right direction after the lack of unrealization of any progress for years. Our state partners, led by Governor Hochul, Senate Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, and Assembly Speaker Hasty, made New York a national leader by enacting gun safety laws in their special session after the Supreme Court decision. These laws will protect New Yorkers, especially the expansion of sensitive areas that restrict guns in locations that this council identified as in need of protection. We will continue to be strong partners in this work because we cannot allow gun violence to continue to hurt our city. During the special session, New York also made clear to the entire country that we are a safe haven for civil rights, abortion access, and reproductive health care at a time when we are all under attack. The state legislature advanced the first step to add an equality amendment to the state constitution, and in short time, this amendment will come before voters to enshrine equal rights and protect our right to safe and accessible reproductive care. Today, we will take action by voting on the New York City Abortion Rights Act, an unprecedented legislative package to safeguard and expand abortion and reproductive health care across our five boroughs. Those who live here and those who come to New York City will have access to care and will be protected because in our city, we firmly believe that safe access to reproductive health care is a human right. And the prioritization of these issues is what it looks like when women are a majority in the legislature, more accurately reflecting our city. We are proud of the incredible work of our members and staff, who have shown national leadership, and will dive deeper into the respective bills of this package later in the agenda. Since the start of the year, ten people have died at Rikers Island while under the watch of the Department of Corrections. It is deeply troubling and quite frankly horrifying. Most recently, we lost Elijah Muhammad, who was kept in isolation for more than thirty hours, and it reportedly took several hours before any staff member discovered his death. The violence and dysfunction on Rikers represent an abject failure of our city. When people within a city system are repeatedly dying, it is a reflection that something is deeply wrong. We are witnessing a humanitarian crisis, and we cannot accept this as normal. Conditions must change, and this body is going to have to take significant action to contribute towards ending this current state. Let us take a moment to remember the ten people whom we've lost this year due to violence and neglect on Rikers. Tarz Youngblood, George Pagan, Herman Diaz, Deshaun Carter, Mary Yehuda, Emmanuel Sullivan, Annie Cabal-Carresquio, Albert Dry, Antonio Bradley, and Elijah Muhammad. Thank you. July is Disability Pride Month. It's a time when we celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of New Yorkers with disabilities, commemorate historic laws that promote inclusivity and accessibility for all, while renewing our commitment to strengthen and expand those policies. Let's continue to uplift New Yorkers with disabilities this month and beyond. Last weekend, more than one million Muslim New Yorkers celebrated Eid al-Ara, the Festival of Sacrifice and Community. Eid is not only a time to reflect on the importance of values like compassion and justice, but to also partake in charitable actions by distributing food to those who need it most. On behalf of the New York City Council, I wish everyone who celebrated a happy and joyous Eid. Before we move on, I want to announce that a member of our City Council staff will be departing later this month. Emily Rooney, an Assistant Deputy Director in the Council's Oversight and Investigations Division, started in two thousand and fifteen. She started as an intern for former Councilmember Edanas Rodriguez. She then joined the Legislative Division as a Legislative Policy Analyst for the Committees on Transportation and Aging. Emily went on to become a Senior Legislative Policy Analyst before her current role. Emily is a hardworking, intelligent, and thoughtful colleague who has worked on significant issues during her time with the council. Emily, we wish you all the luck and all the best at New York Law School and your legal career. And while we will certainly miss Emily, I'm so excited to announce that the council has welcomed two new members of our staff. Erin Mendelson, Director of our Oversight and Investigations Division, and Paris Strater, Director of the Land Use Division. Welcome to the council, and I'm excited to work with you. And finally, please join me in congratulating Councilmember Kevin Riley and his family on the arrival of their beautiful baby boy. We welcome baby Caleb with you, Councilmember. We're so excited to welcome him to our extended council family. Bless his heart. Now, we have a very big stated agenda today, so let's get to it. Today, we're voting on several legislative land use rules and finance items. We will be voting on the following land use items. Thirty-four Morningside Avenue, ANCP Cluster, will facilitate the renovation of a cluster of partially occupied city-owned residential buildings and their conversion from rentals to co-ops owned by the tenants in Councilmember Richardson Jordan's district. Forty-one Summit Street rezoning will facilitate the construction of a four-story residential building with four housing units in Councilmember Hanif's district. Seventy-seven dash thirty-nine Villay Place rezoning will facilitate the development of a new five-story mixed-use building. As modified by the council, it will include approximately seventy-five housing units, ground-floor retail space, and onsite parking. The council is modifying to reduce the density in order to better conform with the existing character of the neighborhood while still creating approximately twenty-three permanently affordable housing units under the MIH program in Councilmember Gennaro's district. Eleventh Street and Thirty-Fourth Avenue rezoning will facilitate the construction of two eight-story mixed-use buildings with an estimated three hundred and thirty-two apartments, including one hundred units affordable under MIH, local retail, arts, and light industrial space in the Ravenswood area of Astoria, Queens. The council is modifying the MIH text amendment to strike option two in Councilmember Wan's district. Weatherall Street and Sixty-seventh Avenue rezoning will facilitate the development of a new eight-story residential building. It will include approximately twenty-one housing units, five affordable units, as well as eight bicycle and eleven car parking spaces. The council is modifying the MIH text amendment to strike option two in Councilmember Schulman's district. Resilient Edge Mayor, a package of zoning changes, urban renewal plan amendments, and disposition approvals to facilitate the implementation of HPD's, quote, "resilient edge mayor" community plan, end quote. In summary, the plan will reduce development in the area of the neighborhood with greatest flood risk by downsizing and advancing a community land trust to manage low-density housing in open space, while facilitating the development of five HPD-sponsored mixed-use buildings with affordable housing, commercial spaces, and community facilities along the subway line. The council is modifying the application to remove a largely privately-owned block from the rezoning area and reduce density in Majority Whip Brooks Powers' district. Lastly, two application in Councilmember Dinowitz' district. Forty-five Forty-One Furman Avenue will facilitate the redevelopment of a new mixed-use residential, commercial, and community facility building. It would include approximately one hundred and fifty affordable housing units and fifty-two parking spaces on the subcellar level. The council will modify to eliminate the proposed extension of the transit zone, the site selection of a six hundred and ninety-six-seat primary school in Community District Eight. We will also be voting on the following finance items. Preconsidered Resolution Two Fifty-Five, sponsored by Finance Chair Justin Brannon, to approve the new designation and changes in the designation of certain organizations to receive funding in the expense budget. In addition, we will vote on several appointments. The council will provide advice and consent for the following. Juan Camilo Osorio for appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission, David Gold for appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission, Rasmia Carmani Fry for appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission, and Christine Yun for appointment as a member to the Board of Standards and Appeals. The council will also vote to confirm the following. Nicole Yearwood for appointment to the Equal Employment Practices Commission, and Ngozi Okaro for appointment to the Equal Employment Practices Commission. Lastly, we will be voting on the following legislation. Introduction Four Eighty-A, sponsored by the Council's Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, would co-name seventy-eight thoroughfares and public spaces throughout the city based on requests of council members whose districts include the location. A complete list of the co-namings can be found on the council's legislative database. We thank you to our staff, Chris Satori, Patrick Mulvahill, and Chima Oba-Cher. Next, we're voting on Introduction Two Twelve-A, sponsored by our General Welfare Committee Chair, Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, which would require a monthly report on emergency housing usage. This bill would also require that report to be updated to include information on the total number of all individuals utilizing emergency housing in the city and the total number of families with children, adult families, single men, and single women utilizing temporary emergency housing. Additionally, Introduction Two Twelve-A would require the Mayor's Office of Operations to report on the exits from various city-administered facilities, including the Department of Youth and Community Development, Department of Homeless Services, Department of Housing Preservation and Development, and Human Resources Administration facilities. Finally, the bill would require the Mayor's Office of Operations to report on the financings, starts, and completions of permanent housing for those existing city-administered facilities. In addition, this bill would make related technical amendments. We thank you to our staff, Amita Kilowan. Next, we will vote on a package of legislation intending to increase the city's involvement in utility-related issues and pressure ConEd to take action to prevent a similar crisis from occurring in the future. Time and time again, New Yorkers experience dramatic and unexpected increases in their ConEd bills, propelling a public outcry and investigations in rate hikes. The City Council is taking action of our own to address this matter. I'm very proud of the bill I sponsored, Introduction Three Hundred Seventy-Two A, which would create an office of the utility advocate in the city for the very first time. This office would be charged with receiving feedback from city customers on their energy utility providers, advocating for utility customers at public hearings, assisting utility customers with accessing financial help to pay their utility bills, and educating city utility customers on their rights and methods to lower their bills. We also have several resolutions in this package. Resolution One Sixty-Two, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass amendments to prevent a utilities rate case from exceeding a certain percentage each year. Beyond the Public Service Commission rejecting a rate case proposal, there are no mechanisms to prevent a utility from proposing an exorbitantly high rate case. Resolution One Seventy-Two, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, calls on New York State to increase the number of commissioners on the Public Service Commission and permit New York City to appoint two of the commissioners. The Public Service Commission approves the rate increases for utilities and ensures New Yorkers receive adequate service. While ConEd holds a near monopoly over the electricity market, the city does not have the power to appoint any commissioners to the PSC. By granting the city power to appoint commissioners, the city would gain greater oversight over the PSC, and utilities would become more accountable to the city. Resolution One Seventy-Three A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ung, calls on the governor and the New York State Legislature to expand financial relief programs to assist city residents struggling to pay their utility bills. Outstanding utility debt could impair the city residents' credit and the city's economic recovery from the pandemic. Further state funding should be allocated to assist New Yorkers unable to pay their utility costs. Resolution One Seventy-Four A, sponsored by Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez, calls on ConEd to improve communication with city residents about increases in utility costs. Many city residents were shocked to find the dramatic rise in their utility bills in January two thousand and twenty-two. ConEd must improve communication to ensure all residents are aware of impending price increases. We thank you to staff, Noah Meixler. And finally, the council will vote on a monumental reproductive rights package. In the wake of the United States Supreme Court's dangerous decision to overturn Roe v. Wade and Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization, this council is taking action to safeguard abortion and advance reproductive health care in New York City. The right to safe and legal abortion is a fundamental human right and must be protected for all who seek reproductive health care, especially in the aftermath of the Supreme Court's dangerous decision. This package of council legislation will help ensure the necessary protections and expanded resources to meet New Yorkers' reproductive health needs and those of all who come to our city in need of access to care. Leaders of this council's historic women majority are taking significant steps to protect the rights of women, trans, and gender non-conforming individuals, and this leadership is critical to expanding and protecting those rights that we rightfully deserve. The first of the first two bills in this package are sponsored by the Council's Women and Gender Equity Committee Chair, Councilmember Tiffany Caban. First is Introduction Four Sixty-Five A, which would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to annually report on the number of births and the number of abortions provided in the city each year for both the individuals who were residents of New York City at the time of such birth or abortion, and for those who were not residents. DOHMH would also be required to assess the ability of licensed medical providers in the city to provide reproductive health care, identify any challenges faced by licensed medical providers to provide reproductive health care, and make recommendations for increasing the capacity of such providers to provide reproductive health care. We thank you, staff, Brenda McKinney, Sarah List, and Andrea Vasquez. Introduction Four Sixty-Six A, also sponsored by public advocate Jemani Williams and Councilmember Shahanah Hanif, would prohibit city agencies from using city resources, including but not limited to, time spent by employees and the use of city property to detain persons for performing or aiding with abortions, or to cooperate or provide information to out-of-state entities related to abortions performed in New York State. We thank you to our staff, Brenda McKinney, Sarah List, and Andrea Vasquez. Now, we will also vote on two bills cosponsored by Councilmember Shahanah Hanif. Introduction Four Seventy-Five A, which is also co-prime sponsored by Councilmembers Caban, Farrah Lewis, Carlina Rivera, Crystal Hudson, and Amanda Farias, and public advocate Jemani Williams. This introduction would create a private right of action for interference with reproductive or endocrine medical care. A person would be able to bring a legal claim of interference with medical care when a lawsuit is commenced against them on the basis of their accessing medical care related to the human reproductive or endocrine systems that is legal in New York City and which was provided in whole or in part in New York City. Thank you to staff members once again, Brenda McKinney, Sarah List, and Andrea Vasquez. Introduction Four Seventy-Four A, also sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, and co-prime sponsored by Councilmembers Williams, Hudson, and Caban, and public advocate Williams, would require the city to engage in a public education program about safe access to reproductive health care. Specifically, the bill would require the city to post information about the city's access to reproductive health care facilities law that protects areas surrounding these facilities and protections for people making reproductive health decisions under the city's human rights law. The bill would also require the city to include information on accessing resources to find comprehensive reproductive health care and privacy protections, and would require a media campaign on reproductive health care as well. We're also voting on two bills sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera. Introduction Five Oh Six A would require the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to implement a public outreach and education campaign on facilities that deceptively advertise or are misleading in their offerings of reproductive health services. This would provide information on what services these facilities provide and do not provide, how they advertise their services, how these facilities can impact timely and safe access to pregnancy care, and how a person can file a complaint about their deceptive practices. Introduction Five Oh Seven A, sponsored by Councilmember Rivera and co-prime sponsored by Councilmembers Gutierrez and Joseph, would require DOHMH to provide FDA-approved medication for medication abortion at no cost to a patient at health clinics operated by DOHMH. DOHMH would provide such medication to patients who seek to terminate their pregnancy when the use of such medication is indicated, and in accordance with the medically reasonable and good-faith professional judgment of such patients' medical... and good-faith professional judgment of such patient's medical provider. DOHMH would also provide counseling and timely referrals to other health facilities and qualified family planning providers if needed for other services. Thank you once again to Brenda McKinney, Sarah List, and Andrea Vasquez. Also included in this package are several resolutions. Resolution 195, sponsored by Council Member Gail Brewer and co-prime-sponsored by Council Member Julie Menon, calls upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign the Reproductive Freedom and Equity Program, which would establish a grant program to provide funding to New York abortion providers and nonprofit organizations to increase access to abortion care. Thank you, staff members Brenda McKinney and Anastasia Zemina. Resolution 196A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, calls upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Senate Bill 9137, Assembly Bill 10356, which would allow out-of-state physicians to provide reproductive health care services in this state while awaiting full licensure. Thank you once again, staff Brenda McKinney and Anastasia Zemina. Resolution 197, sponsored by Council Member Caban and co-prime-sponsored by Council Members Velazquez and Hudson and public advocate Williams, declares New York City as a safe city for all those in need of abortion-related care. Regardless of your background, everyone is welcome here in New York City to get the proper care they need. Thank you again, Brenda McKinney and Anastasia. Resolution 200, sponsored by Council Member Julie Menon, recognizes the importance of the Roe v. Wade decision by declaring January 22, 2023 as Roe v. Wade Day in New York City. January 22, 2023 will mark the 50th anniversary of the landmark Supreme Court decision. While Roe v. Wade may be overturned, it will forever be commemorated here in our city. Thank you once again, Brenda McKinney and Anastasia Zemina. Resolution 242A, sponsored by Council Member Menon, would support Assembly Bill 10468, Senate Bill 8797B, which seeks to amend Article I of the New York State Constitution in relation to equality of rights and protection against discrimination. The amendment would add an equal rights provision that would expand the list of protected classes to include ethnicity, national origin, disability, or sex, including pregnancy and pregnancy outcomes, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. This proposal was recently approved by the legislature and now requires another approval next legislative session in order to be placed before the voters of New York State to amend the state constitution. Resolution 245, sponsored by public advocate Jemani Williams, calls upon the United States Senate to pass and President Joe Biden to sign the Women's Health Protection Act to reinstate and protect the federal right to abortion through its codification into federal law. Thank you once again, Brenda McKinney and Sarah List and Andrea Vasquez. Also, thank you to Jasari Ganathapi, Wiam Nori, Noah Meixler. This is an incredible package of bills that reflects the leadership of so many of our members, whose efforts are to be applauded during such an important moment in our country's history. I thank you for your attention. Now, I will turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you. That was a long one. Lot of items today, a lot of good items on there. So, thank you, Speaker Adams. We're going to now move into discussion of general orders. We are going to begin with Council Member Brewer, followed by Council Member Barron.
Thank you very much. I'm just here because we have a resolution that I think is part of the Speaker's and the council's amazing package. This particular resolution supports funding in Albany for those who are coming to the city of New York from other states who will be desirs of abortion services. I think it's the number 195. And the reason I mention it is, if you see in the papers today, just as an example, there's a 10-year-old
I'll say something.
who lives in Ohio and was raped and had to go to another state. And unfortunately, this is happening over and over again. So, that particular bill that we are resolving to support, I think was asking for $50 million. It won't pass necessarily in this session, but hopefully the next one. And I just, as the Speaker has indicated, also, the state, however, I want to thank the Governor, has put in $35 million into a fund to both, in the first round, help those organizations that are providing abortion, and then in the second round, do even more independent clinics and provide security, because unfortunately, that's needed. So, we're part of a very big process, but New York is certainly leading, and I just want to thank all of us, the entire City Council, for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, we're going to do any talk on, if you're talking about a resolution, just when we get to the resolutions, so we have a list for that as well. So, if you're signed up, it's okay. If you're signed up to speak on a resolution, we'll edge it to that list when we get to that point. We're going now go to Councilmember Barron, and then we'll hear from Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, my colleagues. I rise to highlight two great men in my district, whose names will be dawning our street signs. Now, one is Mr. Jose Rosado, and the other is Mr. Melvin Faulkner. Jose Rosado was a member of Community Board Five, helped so many families, he helped so many individuals, whether it's employment, whether it's housing issues, but his pet project was the Latin Souls Little League. Not only did he turn them into athletic winners, but he also turned them into men and young women who knew how to now navigate the community that they lived in as they grew older. So, we honor Mr. Jose Rosado. And then, Mr. Melvin Faulkner, who worked in my office for many, many years. This man was incredible. He helped over 100 families out of foreclosure. He went down, and before lawyers got a hearing from the judges, they heard from Mr. Melvin Faulkner. His seniors, he made sure their housing was taken care of. He made sure that all of his seniors got the food that they needed. And Melvin Faulkner, he never stopped working. I couldn't even get him to stop working. Take a break, Melvin, but may you rest in peace now and take that well-deserved break that you needed when you're here on earth. So, to those two, I just wanted to rise and honor them as we put their names on street signs.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. We're now going to hear from Councilmember Rivera, followed by Councilmember Joseph.
Okay. New York has always been a leader in protecting reproductive health and rights, and I want to thank Speaker Adams and my colleagues in the Women's Caucus for putting forward such a comprehensive and important package of bills that will both protect our existing rights and improve access to abortion care in this post-Roe era. The bills that we're passing today should act as a model for cities throughout the rest of the country for what we can and must do to protect our basic right to bodily autonomy and increased access to important health care. I'm particularly proud of my bill, Intro 506, with I introduced with the Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson to implement an outreach and education program to inform New Yorkers about the deceptive advertisements and misleading information provided by facilities that say that they provide reproductive health services, but they're actually fake. They're anti-abortion centers that prey on patients in what will be one of the most vulnerable times in their life. And Intro 507 requires DOHMH to provide FDA-approved medication for medication abortion at no cost to a patient at health clinics that they operate, and I want to thank Council Members Gutierrez and Joseph. This legislation will ensure that the people most impacted by abortion bans across the country will be able to access reliable health care should they come to New York City seeking abortion care. Again, I want to thank Speaker Adams for your leadership, my colleagues in the Women's Caucus, Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson, and the advocates. There are so many, NIRH, Planned Parenthood of Greater New York, the Latina Institute, and everyone who has rallied, protested, called your elected representative, and spoken out about this injustice from the Supreme Court, and for making sure that New York remains committed to protecting the reproductive rights of everyone who needs access to care. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to go to Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Brooks-Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to speak today in honor of Sarita Rain, who was called home to God on July 25, 2020. Sarita was a lifelong educator, and today she's being honored with a vote for street renaming in the district of my colleague, Councilmember Ina Vernikoff. Born on October 19, 1935, Sarita came to Brooklyn, New York, from Lima, Peru for a visit, but she decided to stay in New York where she met her husband Arnold. They had two children, Greg, who works at the Department of Education, and my friend Bridget, who works at the UFT. Sarita was the gold standard for her dedication to young people. She began her career with the Department of Education as a parent coordinator, where she was promoted to Assistant Bill Thompson, who at the time was a school board and vice president. Among her many accomplishments, she was elected president of the District 21 School Board, as well as president of the New York Association for Brain-Injured Children. She served as the Committee on Special Education chairperson for Community School District 12 in the Bronx, and she later moved to Community School District 2 in Manhattan as the deputy superintendent. Sarita taught aspiring educators about the fundamentals of special education at the College of Staten Island, and was the initial planning team for the creation of Edward Amaro High School. But last, last but certainly, not least, she was the PTA Association president until 1985. A street co-naming is a tremendous honor. Sarita, I'm sure you're listening to us from up above, and I thank you for your years of service to our young, to the city's young people. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to go to Councilmember Brooks-Powers.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I too like to celebrate the passage of a strong reproductive rights package today, including my own bill, Resolution 196A, calling the state to pass legislation that will allow out-of-state physicians to provide reproductive health services in New York while they await full licensure. New York has long been a sanctuary for women seeking abortion and other reproductive care services, and we will continue to be. We cannot delay in the fight to protect abortion access and bodily autonomy for people across this country. I'd also like to congratulate Nicole Yearwood for her nomination to the Equal Employment Practices Commission as a fellow soror of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and from her years of advocacy on behalf of marginalized communities to bolster voter engagement and strengthen our democracy, I know Nicole will do good work on the commission and the fight for a fair workplace. I'd also like to acknowledge the street co-naming bill we are passing, which includes two new co-namens in Rosedale, recognizing the lives and contributions of W. O'Brien and Oswald Granum. I was honored to work with the Rosedale community to honor both of these Rosedale residents and their years of community service. And finally, I'd like to speak on the Resilient Edgemare Land Use Item. Today's vote is in support of resiliency and a path to homeownership for Black and Brown families, but there is much more work left to be done. This project, in its original form, was one of how many land use proposals we've seen have placed a burden on marginalized communities, with no clear path to critical investments that would sustain such a project and help the community thrive. Although we have secured many commitments, there's more work left to be done. But there are many positive components of this project. Through the Community Advisory Board, we will continue to shape this project in a way that benefits Rockaway. We reduced the proposed density by half on a peninsula, and also was able to secure a 35% floor for homeownership, financial resources to remove barriers to affordability, and downzoning to promote resiliency and protect our coastal community. We are investing in our roads to eradicate chronic flooding and congestion, as well as keeping the city's foot to the fire when it comes to investments in schools in our community as our need will grow with the development. We are modernizing our evacuation plan to match the new footprint of our community and prepare for stronger storms. I'd like to thank Chief of Staff Jeremy John, First Deputy Chief of Staff Faye Zali, the land use staff, for their extremely hard work on this, as well as my own Alex Hunter, my policy director, tying up the commitments made by the administration overnight and well into today. My community sent me here to fight for them and bring home the best project, and that's what we've done. And with that, I encourage my colleagues in the body to vote in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to go to Councilmember Farias, followed by Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to shout out the Women's Caucus legislative package being introduced today, which focuses on accessibility agency and safety for women, trans, and gender expansive people to have real access to abortion care. There are five bills from the package being voted on today, which includes Result 195, Intro 465A, 466A, 475A, and 507A. All of these bills create a number of proactive protections so that New York City can maintain abortion access for all people with a capacity for pregnancy. I know that abortion may not directly affect everyone, every one of us in this room, but in a country with a high maternal mortality and a lack of childcare infrastructure, it is important and our duty as legislators to protect the lives of women, trans, and gender expansive people, which makes signing protective bills like these that much more critical. I urge all of my colleagues today to vote yes on every bill in the package. I also have another bill, Intro 179A, which would require the Mayor's Office on Workforce Development to report on the role of women and gender expansive workers in non-traditional careers. Data like this is how we first assess what is and is not working in our agencies. There has never been a more critical time than now to focus on getting women in the workforce as we continue to recover from the pandemic. Women deserve the high-paying, stable union jobs that construction and other non-traditional careers offer. By passing this bill today, we are prioritizing women and gender expansive people's economic wellness and making sure every sector in our workforce has the best people in the job for it. With my last 25 seconds, I'd also like to acknowledge the street co-naming of Marie Reed Way in my district. Marie Reed gave all of herself to the Soundview community. She was a dedicated member of Soundview Presbyterian Church, and I'm really proud today to be introducing a street co-naming for our community back in Council District 18. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Williams, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. I am very proud to co-prime 474A, sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, as, you know, we think about the pivotal moment in the fight for equal access to reproductive health care. The overturning of Roe v. Wade should not discourage us, but instead ignite us to act, and that is exactly what we are doing today. I am excited about the amendments to the bill and really want to thank the bill sponsor for her flexibility in making sure that we strengthen our efforts and include additional city agencies to make sure we maximize our impact. I am equally excited to be voting on the appointments for the Equal Employment Practices Commission. This commission has had some vacancies for quite some time, so I know they are excited to welcome two new members, Ms. Yearwood and Ms. Okoro. And I just want to thank the Speaker and council leadership for prioritizing both of these very important measures. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear from Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Axies.
Thank you first to Councilmember Williams. I want to thank Chair Williams and Caban for championing my bills, Intro 474A and Intro I also want to thank public advocate Williams, Councilmembers Hudson, Lewis, Rivera, Farias for introducing these bills alongside me, and of course, gratitude to Speaker Adams for facilitating today's important package of reproductive rights legislation before us. I want to thank the folks behind the scenes who made these bills possible, including council staff, Jaya Sri Gunapathy, Rachel Cordero, David Seitzer, Brenda McKinney, and Andrea Vasquez, as well as my legislative and budget director, Alex Liao, Chief of Staff Nora Brickner, and of course, Nyku for their invaluable insight. New York City's abortion protections are underutilized, with many New Yorkers simply not aware they exist, and 474A addresses this information gap by requiring the city to conduct language-accessible public education and media campaigns about existing protections. These include the right to access the health facilities without harassment and prohibitions against employment or housing discrimination on the basis of reproductive health decisions. Additionally, following the Dobbs decision, there will be an influx of people traveling to New York City for reproductive care. People seeking trans-affirming hormone treatment will also travel here for care as well. These folks are vulnerable to civil suits for receiving medical procedures that are legal in our city but illegal in their home state or municipality. And so, 475A addresses this issue by establishing these suits as interference with medical care and allowing people to countersue under New York City law. If the countersuit prevails, the plaintiff will be awarded $10,000 in damages and also awarded cost of litigation. These bills and the legislative package before us cement our city as a true bastion for reproductive rights. I also want to note that I'm voting aye on the 41 Summit Place rezoning in my district. At the outset, I was super hesitant to support this application because I believe there's a greater need for manufacturing districts than the continued development of margerate housing. After several rounds of negotiations and community input, we were able to secure a fourth of the building for affordable housing at 60% fourth of the building for affordable housing at 60% AMI and a commitment of $20,000 in improvements for the community garden. I sent out an email, and I appreciate the ways in which my colleagues have responded. So thank you so much. And also, big day for my district. We are co-naming Kensington as Little Bangladesh.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember, I believe, last but not least, we'll now hear from Councilmember Narcisse.
For the street co-naming, first and foremost, I have to say thank you to Councilmember Darlene Millie for introducing the co-naming of East 56th Street and Linden Boulevard to Cade Ashton Tyler, Luen Way. In honor of my constituents, Cade Luen was an innocent, intelligent, fun-loving 12-year-old who life was, I mean, life was cut short due to another act of senseless gun violence in our streets. It is my hope that this memorial, in the form of the street co-naming, serve as a reminder to all of us that we must work together to bring an end to gun violence in our community. It is time for us to walk the walk, not just talk, but to address the inequities all over New York City. And once again, thank you. And I am proud that New York City is standing up for female reproductive rights, and it will serve us as, it will serve the city as a safe heaven for those residents of states who have been denied the right to choose. We women should be able to have a right over our body. We must do all we can to protect the right and the safe of abortion, not only for New Yorkers, but for all Americans who arrive in our state seeking to make their choice about their bodies. So thank you. I hope all my colleagues will vote, and I believe in 31 women strong. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more. We're going to hear from Councilmember Aviles, followed by Councilmember Richardson Jordan.
Great. I guess first I'd like to extend my congratulations to Councilmember Riley and his growing family. And Speaker, I think it may be time to talk in earnest about a daycare center here in the chambers or in the building somewhere close. Yes. There's a great deal of work to be proud of today, especially the reproductive health package that we will be voting on earlier. I'm also delighted to vote on a host of street co-namings that honor New York City's everyday heroes. Look at this long list of incredible people. It should remind us about the collective power and responsibility, and how incredible New Yorkers do acts of kindness and love every single day. Of course, I have to pay special tribute to someone from my district being honored by a street co-naming as well. Sandra Vizcainos was a longtime Sunset Park resident and community activist who emigrated to Sunset Park in 1977 from the Dominican Republic. She was a mom, a wife, a sister, a friend, a neighbor, an educator, and she was also the first educator in New York City to die from COVID-19. To Sandra and her family, gracias. The District 38 community thanks you for your service to our youth and families and for being such a dedicated New Yorker. And please pay attention, we are not out of this pandemic, and in her honor, please take extra precautions to protect yourself and your families. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you. We're now hearing from Councilmember Richardson Jordan.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to call people's attention to LU 45, which is on today's stated. It's a housing project in my district. This was, this was a long one, but we did reach resolution, and I really want to thank some members of land use, particularly Chelsea Kelly, Andrew Lassiter, and Paris Strader. I also would like to thank Jay Coe from the Speaker's Office and my very own Ovi Ladimore, Legislative Director for District 9, because we got there. This is really an ode to our residents' self-determination. This was a cluster of buildings where some residents were ready to take an NCP deal, but other residents, understandably so, rightfully so, wanted to remain in TIL and fight for the original TIL promise. And I'm just glad that we were able to work out something that worked for the residents and their own empowered decision-making in a difficult process. I would also very much like to thank Councilwoman Stevens, Councilwoman De La Rosa, Councilman Kagan, and Councilman Barron for signing on to a letter that I had put out around the budget for support for the TILs, and this is not something that's going away. Because while we are taking a step forward with some residents, we have other residents who still need support, so we, as a council, must fund TILs. So I wanted to thank those council members as well for their advocacy. Also, Councilman Marte and Councilwoman Nurse for showing interest in having further discussions, and Chair Lewis for being open to a possible hearing around the TILs and continuing further discussions. But overall, great work, and we'll also continue the fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time. Thanks, everyone. We are now going to close general orders, and we're going to move into the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Intro 474A, Reproductive Health Care Campaign.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 372A, Office of the Utility Advocate.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 506A, Reproductive Health Services Campaign.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered Reso 255 Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 212B, Report on City Administered Facilities.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 45 and Reso 261, 34 Morningside Avenue.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 67 through 71, Resilient Edgemere.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU, excuse me, LU 78 and Reso 262, 41 Summit Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 79 through 84, various applications.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
Preconsidered LU 85 and Reso 263, Primary School Facility.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 212B, Report on City Administered Facilities.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 480A, Naming of 78 Thoroughfares and Public Places.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M 75 and Reso 264, approving the appointment of David Gold, Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
M 76 and Reso 265, approving the appointment of Rasmia Kirmani Frye, Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
M 77 and Reso 266, approving the appointment of Christine Yun, Board of Standards and Appeals.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered M 80 and Reso 267, approving the appointment of Juan Camilo Osorio, Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered M 81 and Reso 268, approving the appointment of Nicole Yearwood, Equal Employment Practices Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered M 82 and Reso 269, approving the appointment of Engosi Okaro, Equal Employment Practices Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intros 465A, 466A, 475A, and 507A, Reproductive Rights Package.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, Intro 179A.
Laid over.
LU 63 and Reso 270, and LU 64 and Reso 271, 4541 Furman Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 67 and Reso 272 through LU 71 and Reso 276, Resilient Edgemere.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 79 and Reso 277, and LU 80 and Reso 278, 77-39, Vla Place rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 81 and Reso 279, and LU 82 and Reso 280, 11th Street and 34th Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 83 and Reso 281, and LU 84 and Reso 282, Weatherall Street and 67th Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Abreu.
Aye on all.
Ariola.
I'd first like to disclose that Howard Beach Lindwood Civic Association's co-president is my Chief of Staff, Billison Storillo. I am aye on all except for Intros 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, 507A, which I am a no.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Barron.
May I explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I abstain on M 75 and Reso 264, appointments to commission. I vote no on M 76, Reso 265, David Gold's appointment to the Planning Commission. I abstain on M 77, Reso 266. I abstain on preconsidered M 80 and Reso 267, and I vote yes on preconsidered Reso M 81 and Reso 268. For the land use items, I vote yes on LU 45, Morningside. I vote no on pre LU 78. No on pre LU 79 and 80. No on pre LU 81 and 82. No on pre LU 83 and 84. And no on pre LU 63 and 64. I'm voting no on these because 75% of these are market. 70 to 75 are market. We have to flip the script. I think 80 to 75% should be affordable, and 20% could be market. So that's why my no vote, and I vote aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Botcher.
Not that bad.
Brannan.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Brooks Powers.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Today's a big day, and I think we have a lot to be proud of. Even before the far-right wing used a mix of perjury and dirty tricks to hijack and pack its majority with far-right-wing fundamentalist ideologues, the Supreme Court already had all of the makings of an illegitimate anti-democratic institution. And we've been fed this fallacy that the judiciary is some apolitical institution. Not ironically, it's exactly because I was a practicing attorney who litigated our constitutional rights in court every day, that I know that the courts and the judges who preside over them are just as inherently political as the other two branches of government. And it's with that knowledge that we can then say enough. So enough deference to this collection of religious fundamentalists and corporate extremists, enough talk about how the court serves as a check on the legislative and executive branches. It's time to start talking about how those branches can, should, and must check the court. And the extremist majority's indefensible decision to overturn Roe v. Wade is a searing affront to human rights, a precursor to immense death and suffering, and a call for us all to get organized. And we've said this many times before, it's going to take an immense groundswell of action to get what we really need, the guaranteed right to a safe, legal abortion on demand without apology and at no dollar cost for anyone who determines that they need one. And what we can do today is ensure that New York is a safe city for anyone receiving, performing, or assisting in abortion care. And so I'm really proud that many of my colleagues have risen to this occasion and crafted a wide array of legislation to counteract this attack on all people who can get pregnant. And so it's with that in mind that I emphatically vote aye on all of the abortion-related legislation, and aye on everything else, and abstaining on Res 264. Thank you.
Thank you. Carr.
I'd like to disclose on the record that in this transparency resolution, we're funding CUNY, and my domestic partner is a student at CUNY. And with that said, I'll be voting no on Introductions 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, and 507A, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to thank our colleagues and our speaker, who has led on this historic access to reproductive and abortion services package, and the Women's Caucus as well. New York is notoriously considered a beacon for all those who are pushed to the margins of our society. As other states begin and continue to heavily restrict access to abortion and abortion care, these proposals are essential in preparing New York's bandwidth for the expected influx of people seeking reproductive health care from outside of state. We must amply prepare to ensure that not only people from outside of state, but also people right here living in New York who do not have access to health care are provided with imperative care that they need and services that they're looking for. These services are never actually truly available until we remove the barriers that prohibit or limit people from seeking medical assistance. This means that we must provide ample funding, access to information, expanded services, language access, and expediting the process to receive potentially lifesaving medical attention and prescriptions to ensure that we are delivering equal and equitable reproductive and abortion services in New York City. So I want to thank the colleagues for this historic package. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the co-naming of Ramona Elizabeth Rodriguez Way, who is a woman who unfortunately was killed by her husband in an act of domestic violence in my district. Her sisters, her daughters, who are watching us right now, have started an organization, Long Live Our Butterfly, to provide direct access to domestic violence and intimate-partner violence survivors in our district. And so I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the scourge of intimate-partner violence that continues to take over our city, and thank them for turning their pain into action on behalf of Ramona Elizabeth Rodriguez. I vote aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all, and I just quickly want to say that abortion access is health care, and the health care access that people individually need does not directly impact each of us here personally. And as legislators representing numerous people in our communities, we need to make sure that we are legislating for everyone.
Felice.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all and abstain from land use item number 70.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, you said aye on all?
Sorry, can you? Abstain from land use item number 70 and aye on the rest.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intros 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, and 507A, of which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote? First, I want to put on the record that to the extent that in this transparency resolution, we are funding the Department of Education. One of my children is a student in the Department of Education. I'd also like to call attention to a couple of co-namings that I'm proud to have sponsored. One would honor Dr. Sergio Rubio, who was a veterinarian originally from Peru, who brought his expertise and dedication to Jackson Heights for over 40 years while expanding his veterinary and community service to previously underserved communities. Dr. Sergio Rubio was truly a humanitarian who treated all in the community as a veterinarian in need, and all whose pets needed services too. And it is a great honor to sponsor this co-naming today. The other co-naming would be for a section in my district that would be renamed as Little Thailand Way to commemorate the vibrant and growing Thai community in Woodside, Elmhurst, and Jackson Heights.
Kagan?
Aye on all.
Thank you. Krishnan?
Permission to explain my vote? First, I want to put on the record that to the extent that in this transparency resolution, we are funding the Department of Education. One of my children is a student in the Department of Education. I'd also like to call attention to a couple of co-namings that I'm proud to have sponsored. One would honor Dr. Sergio Rubio, who was a veterinarian originally from Peru, who brought his expertise and dedication to Jackson Heights for over 40 years while expanding his veterinary and community service to previously underserved communities. Dr. Sergio Rubio was truly a humanitarian who treated all in the community as a veterinarian in need and all whose pets needed services too. And it is a great honor to sponsor this co-naming today. The other co-naming would be for a section in my district that would be renamed as Little Thailand Way to commemorate the vibrant and growing Thai community in Woodside, Elmhurst, and Jackson Heights. The Thai community has grown very rapidly. And Woodside Avenue where this co-naming would be would be a reflection of the vibrancy and the beautiful culture of our Thai community. And thank you, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Lee?
Aye on all and very proud, especially today, to be part of the first women-led majority council.
Thank you. Marte?
I vote aye on all.
Meili? Menon?
Aye on all.
Moya?
Aye on aye.
Narcisse?
Can I have one second?
Sure.
Permission?
Yes, granted.
On Reso 196A, since there's a question, as a nurse for three decades, I have learned don't take anything for granted. This one, which allow out-of-state physicians, that's mean licensed physicians, I just want to put it out there. I'm assuming, but it's not there, is licensed out-of-state physicians, because I had one question asked to me, so. Aye on all.
Nurse?
I vote aye on all, except land use items 68, 69, 70, and 71.
Thank you.
It is licensed. You're not crazy.
Ose?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I have three street co-namings. A street co-naming for local 9/11 hero firefighter Sergeant USA reservist Sean Edward Powell on the intersection of Monroe and Marcy, as well as a street co-naming for another local 9/11 hero, Police Officer Sean Powell at the intersection of Sumner and Lewis. You know, two icons of our community that, you know, put in service to the city. So I'm so happy to see that they're both receiving co-namings, as well as finally a street co-naming for Bishop Marvin D. Williams, the senior, on the intersection of Myrtle and Tompkins. Another significant community figure in Bed-Stuy. So happy to see a co-naming for that family as well. And I am aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Palladino?
I vote aye, except on intros 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, and 507A. Aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Wrestler?
Aye on all, and I will abstain on Resolution 264. Thank you.
Thank you. Richardson, Jordan?
So I'm going to be a no on Resolution 264. Let's put some community advocates instead of those with real estate ties on city planning. Aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Riley?
I just want to disclose for the record that we are funding the Department of Education and my oldest daughter is going into the second grade, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Vivaire?
I want to disclose for the record that my mother is an employee of the New York City Police Department, and they are included in this transparency resolution, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Sanchez?
Aye on all.
Thank you. Schulman?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to acknowledge two street co-namings that I am sponsoring in my district. Joseph Hennessy Way. Joseph Hennessy was a longtime chair of Community Board Six in Queens for over 30 years and very active in the community. And Greg Stein, who was an LGBTQ activist and active with the AIDS Center of Queens County and many other organizations. And I also want to say that on LU83, Resolution 281, and LU84, Resolution 282, that's a project in my district that I'm very happy to say I was able to get deeply affordable housing for. It's a small development, but it's another development in my district that I'm able to have more families be able to come and live in the community. And I also want to thank the Speaker for her leadership on the historic access to reproductive rights and health care in this package led by this historic body of women. Thank you, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Stevens?
Aye on all.
Ung?
Aye on all.
Velazquez?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I'd like to disclose that my brother serves on the Board of Samaritans of New York, and they are being funded in this Reso. So with everything said, aye on all.
Thank you. Vernikov?
Aye on all, except no on 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, and 507A. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams?
I am stating for the record that I am a CUNY student with a fellowship, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Juan?
Aye on all, except Resolution 264.
Thank you. Jaeger?
Aye on all with the exception of introductions 474, 506, 507, and I'm abstaining on 480. Thank you.
Thank you. Borelli?
Aye on all, except 466A, 474A, 475A, 506A, 507A. Thank you.
Powers?
I vote aye on all and disclosing that we're funding Mount Sinai in this, and my mother works for Mount Sinai.
Speaker Adams?
I'd just like to acknowledge once again my extreme pride in this body. First-time-ever women majority in the New York City Council, looking out for the reproductive rights and the health care of women, not just in New York City, but across this great country of ours. I'd also like to acknowledge a street co-naming in my district, 28, which I call the Great 28. We'll have a street naming after Rita Wanti, also known as Auntie Rita, Persaud Way. Auntie Rita was hit by a hit-and-run driver a couple of years ago in my district in Richmond Hill, and I want to uplift her in her memory today. And I also like to uplift two bastions of Southeast Queens, I believe that the St. Albans area, David and Renee Blueford. They will also be commemorated in a street co-naming. They were bastions in community service and pride for those of us who grew up under their leadership in Southeast Queens. With that, I happily vote aye on all.
Thank you. We have to just do two disclosures. We're going to call on Councilmember Aviles, and then we'll go to Councilmember Sanchez.
I disclose that my sister works for the New York City Parks Department that is being funded in this transparency resolution.
We'll now go to Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to disclose that my brother is an adjunct lecturer at CUNY BMCC, and CUNY is being funded in this budget. I also would like to change some of my votes. I want to abstain from land use item 64, M77, Resolution 264. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sanchez, can you repeat that one more time? We couldn't hear you.
Yes. Abstaining from land use 64, M77, and Resolution 264.
Thank you. Thank you. We're just going to wait a minute while folks tally the votes. We're just going to call on Councilmember Hanif for an amendment to her vote.
I'd like to abstain from M75.
Thank you. Okay. All items on today's general order count are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of intro 466A, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, six in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 474A, 41 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 475A, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, six in the negative, zero abstentions. Intro 506A, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 507A, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions. M75 and Reso 264, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and five abstentions. M76 and Resolution 265, adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. And M80 and Resolution 267, adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention. Land use items 63, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, and accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Land use item 70 and Resolution 275, sorry, land use 68, 69, 71, adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 480A, adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention. Land use item 64, Resolution 271, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one abstention. And M77 and Resolution 266, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two abstentions. And I just am going to hold for one second for a clarification on a vote. Hold on one second. Sorry, and just one addition. Land use 70 and Resolution 275, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one abstention. Okay, that's it. Thanks. We will now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move to the discussion of resolutions. We'll first hear from Councilmember Ung.
Good afternoon and thank you for opportunity to speak about Resolution Number 173A. This resolution calls on New York State to expand financial relief programs to help struggling residents who have fallen behind on their utility bills due to a nearly three-fold increase in the cost of energy at the start of the year. Utility customers here in New York City, both unaware of impending price increase and coping with a colder-than-usual January, were surprised by the bills that include dramatic, unexpected increases. Many were already suffering economically due to the pandemic and had to make the difficult decision between covering their housing, food, and medical costs or paying their utility bills to keep their power on. As we approach the hottest months of the year, energy usage will go up, and these same New Yorkers will likely fall even behind on their energy costs. Experts predict rising utility debt will affect residents' credit scores, result in service being disconnected, and even lead to homelessness, which is already at crisis levels in New York City. While the Governor and the state legislature has created a program to forgive the utility debt of many low-income New Yorkers, the funding is not near enough to meet their current needs. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this important piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from Councilmember Menon.
Thank you, Majority Leader Powers. When Roe v. Wade was overturned, we faced the unconscionable reality that our daughters have less rights today than we did, and we literally have turned back the clock of time on women's rights by 100 years. That is why I'm proud to sponsor two resolutions that the council will vote on today that are part of the reproductive rights package. Resolution 200 would set January 22, 2023, as Roe v. Wade Day in the City of New York to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the landmark Supreme Court decision. We will not forget such an important court case, and that moment must be remembered. In addition, Resolution 242 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass an equal rights amendment to the state constitution. This would basically codify reproductive rights, rights around sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, pregnancy, and other rights that are not currently enshrined in the state constitution. Lastly, I just want to thank the Speaker and my colleagues for this legislative package today. It's a really proud moment to be voting on all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone else signed up or liked a? Oh, Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak briefly on the bill I'm introducing with my colleague, Councilwoman Rita Joseph, which will ban the sale of flavored cigarettes. We are all well aware of-
This is on Council resolutions?
Oh, it's still on resolutions.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We have it on the list. Today's resolutions? No. Nobody? Okay. We're going to now move, we're going to have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or approaching the dais before the vote. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 162 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign amendments to Article 4 of the Public Service Law to prevent utilities' rate case from exceeding a certain percentage each year. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 172 calls on New York State to increase the number of commissioners on the Public Service Commission and permit New York City to appoint two of its commissioners. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 173 calls on the Governor and the New York State Legislature to expand financial relief programs to assist city residents struggling- relief programs to assist city residents struggling to pay their utility bills. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 174A calls on Con Ed to improve communication with city residents about increases in utility costs. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 195 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Reproductive Freedom and Equity Program, Senate Bill 9078 and Assembly Bill 10148A, which would establish a grant program to provide funding to New York abortion providers and nonprofit organizations to increase access to abortion care. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 196A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill Number 9137 and Assembly Bill Number 10356, which would allow out-of-state physicians to provide reproductive health care services in the state while awaiting full licensure. Will those in favor, please say aye. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 197 declares New York City a safe city for all those in need of abortion-related care. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 200A declares January 22, 2023, as Roe v. Wade Day in the City of New York to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the landmark United States Supreme Court decision. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 242B congratulates the state legislature for approving Senate Bill Number 15002 and Assembly Bill Number 41002, a resolution proposing amendment to the New York State Constitution in relation to equal protection and calling on the state legislature to improve this amendment again next session so it may be submitted to the voters of New York State for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 245 calls on the New York, United States Senate to pass and the president to sign the Women's Health Protection Act. All those in favor, please say aye. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into general discussion. Before that, we'll just do one quick correction on the vote. Land use item 85 and Resolution 263 was adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions. Thank you. We'll now move into general discussion. We have 15 members signed up. Reminder, it's a beautiful day in July. It is, we will begin with Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today I introduce Intro 573, which would prohibit the operation of horse-drawn cabs in Central Park, effectively banning horse-drawn carriages in New York City for good. Whether it was passing legislation, creating the ACC shelter in each borough, or to creating the heat index for horse-drawn carriages, to establishing an office of animal welfare, increasing animal cruelty reporting, the banning of trafficking of wild birds, this body has come together in the past to do great work on animal rights issues. And it's time, it's time once again to step up for the defenseless. It's time to advocate for the horses who have suffered for far too long. We are here today to declare this city horse-carriage-free, and I need you, my colleagues, to help us achieve this. This is 2022. It's not 1822. We should not have horses serving humans for our greedy desires. We should not allow drivers to make a buck off the backs of these poor horses. Other cities in Europe, Asia, the Middle East, and Mexico have already done this. New York City needs to be among them, and we need to be the leaders of this in the United States of America. The drivers will be able to work more with electric carriages. They won't lose time due to the heat index or inclement weather as they do now. The jobs would be prevailing wage and would have great benefits. Let's all work together to end the misery of these horses finally. Let's end horse carriages in New York City once and for all. Anyone who feels that horses have to serve man in the 21st century is out of touch. I thank the advocates who have pushed for this, and I especially thank my colleagues who have signed on to this bill as a pre-intro sponsors. Please sign on to Intro 573 and help us again do the right thing by our animals. Thank you, Majority Leader. Almost made it.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilwoman Wong.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. So I'll send you guys all an email, but just wanted you to be aware that this Saturday, I'm sure you guys have heard about 988, which is the federal number to reach out about mental health versus 911. So that is actually rolling out on Saturday, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. And I'll send all of you information on it so that you can put it out on social media or let your constituents know about it. And I just had a meeting today with them about which languages. So far, right now, it's just English and Spanish. They're working with community partners for LGBTQ, Asian, and all their other organizations because they want to find out which groups are on the ground doing the work in the mental health side. So reach out if you guys have any groups you'd like to recommend. And there was one other thing, which I forgot, but I just wanted you all to be aware of that because it's important. There are going to be kinks, obviously, when it comes to the rollout, but they are going to be monitoring that closely.
Thank you. We've got Councilwoman Wong, followed by Councilwoman Brewer.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader Keith Powers. I just want to thank our Speaker Adrian Adams, as well as all of my council colleagues on this historic day where we are passing legislation to protect reproductive rights and leading the way for all other cities to follow suit. As a new mother who gave birth about four months ago, I cannot imagine if during my second or third trimester of pregnancy, someone told me that I was forced to, that I had no option to opt out of fully delivering a child that I did not want. And I believe that this is truly a health care issue, where this issue should solely be between the individual, their partner, as well as their health care provider, and nobody else. So I am incredibly grateful to be part of this legislative body, to make sure that we're fighting for reproductive rights. And I also want to point out that today, with my council colleagues Gutierrez and Menon, we are introducing Intro 568, 598, and 599, where we will continue to legislate to make internet, affordable internet accessible to all. So I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Councilwoman Brewer, followed by Councilwoman O'Reilly.
Thank you very much. I have some sad news. Joe Goldblum died an hour ago. He was staff member for Archie Spigner, Leroy Conry, Danique Miller, and he certainly knew Councilmember Williams, and he was a real advocate for CD27. He lived in Manhattan, commuted back and forth, and he was a member of Community Board 11. So it's a loss. He loved this city council very much. I am also supportive of Intro 563, which is being introduced today. This is based, I think, as you know, on Local Law 46, 2013, when I passed the paid sick days. I remember de Blasio took credit for it, but I was the one that actually passed it. And I also remember that it took a lot of great work by Consumer Affairs, but just because we've had a long history of making sure that the powers that it provides, particularly during COVID, where people can get support for five days of paid sick days so they can take care of themselves or their family. However, despite all the great efforts, there has been a recent study by Better Balance and the Community Service Society whereby we learned that a significant percentage of working people in the City of New York, particularly women, did not know or have access to paid sick days. They just don't know about it. So that means that although the law passed nine years ago, there are many barriers of education and access to this law in workplaces in our city. And so we need to make sure that not only can you file with the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, but we also want to have a right to file a private civil right of action, and that's what these studies are calling for, and that's what this bill calls for. Thank you very much, and our prayers are with Joe Goldblum's family.
Thank you. Now hear from Councilwoman O'Reilly, followed by Councilwoman Barron.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to thank my colleagues for the well wishes to my family on our new addition. I'm happy to partner with my colleague Chair Rita Joseph to introduce legislation, Intro 588, which will require the DOE to disclose school admission and policies on its website for every school. This bill would enhance the clarity of our infrastructure, giving further insight and transparency to where and how we can improve our education system. Providing online visibility, including but not limited to the application process, selection criteria, and priority groups, procedures for application evaluation, and seat assignments, criterias for every New York City school encourages equity and accessibility to inform essential to the educational planning of our families. Intro 588 will present the opportunity to codify and quantify these already common practices to a digital scale, ensuring that we continue to upgrade our system is conducive to supporting the needs of our families and uplifting scholars with the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now hear from Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say to my colleagues, I stand now to give credit to those who voted against this budget, those who said no to $215 million cut from the Department of Education, Councilmember Osay, Councilmember Valles, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Richardson-Jordan, and Councilmember Barron, and Councilmember Caban. I feel a sense of vindication now that the city council is considering putting that money back in a budget mod in November. We didn't even have to do that. You had the power to leave it in there in the first place. And I'm just hoping that we use the power of this city council during the budget process to prioritize the people and not pet projects, because education is for liberation. And to deny these children what the administrators need to make education more qualitative in our communities, we're seeing it now all over. They're complaining, it's hurt, and it's not just the Department of Education. Most of the departments, city departments, are suffering because of this budget that was passed. So we may not be in favor with the Speaker or the mayor, and we may not get as much as the rest of you, but we get a good night's sleep because we did the right thing in not voting for a budget that overfunded the police with $11 billion and underfunded education with $215 million. I hope you can do the right thing this time and restore it in November.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilwoman Gutierrez, followed by Councilwoman Schulman.
Thank you, Majority. I'm proud to work alongside Councilmember Wong to introduce a package of bills today that look towards building equity when it comes to what should be considered a public utility, the internet. I'm tired of people calling the internet a luxury. It is a necessity of everyday life. The digital divide is a structural reality that perpetuates social, economic, and political disparities. It is essentially digital redlining, excluding the working poor from an essential infrastructure that allows people to function in today's society. My bill, Intro 568, requires the Office of Technology Innovation to report on the utilization of the city's discounted internet service programs and to significantly improve their outreach to eligible households. The bills introduced by Councilmembers Wong also work towards the goal of ensuring that more New Yorkers know about this program and have the assistance to obtain it. I encourage all of you to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Schulman, followed by Councilwoman Hanif.
Thank you. I have devoted my personal and professional life to healthcare advocacy, which was born out of the HIV/AIDS movement, where I witnessed friends and neighbors die because of the indifference of those in power. I sadly had the same feeling of indifference with the sloppy rollout of the monkeypox vaccine, both on the federal and local level. I have been in constant contact with the DOHMH, the mayor's office, advocates, epidemiologists, and others on this issue. I want to thank my colleagues in the LGBTQIA+ Caucus for their support and collaboration, and want to thank the Speaker for her leadership and support in planned actions we will be taking in the near future. Please stay tuned. With regard to the rise in COVID rates, I am working with council staff and colleagues to ensure the Department of Health provides all New Yorkers with the transparent tools and data needed for all of us to make informed decisions on what we need to do as New Yorkers to protect ourselves and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear now from Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you. Today I'm introducing two bills focused on empowering our immigrant communities. Intro 569 would create an immigrant workers' bill of rights. While many federal, state, and local labor protections apply to workers of all immigrant statuses, most immigrants are not aware of this fact, which leaves them vulnerable to various forms of exploitation. This bill of rights would compile all of these protections into a succinct document that employers would be required to distribute to all of their workers annually. The bill of rights would also be required to be conspicuously displayed in physical workplaces and also included in digital workplaces, such as the worker-facing side of apps. Equipping immigrant workers with knowledge of their rights will allow them to exercise them when violations occur. Additionally, we hope that this will dissuade employers from committing the violations in the first place. And I want to thank Councilmember Aviles for introducing this bill alongside me. Intro 570 would create an Office of Translation and Interpretation within the mayor's office of Immigrant Affairs. Currently, our city agencies outsource most of their language services to out-of-state companies who produce subpar work at high costs. For budget reasons, some agencies have failed to comply with Local Law 30, which requires documents be translated in the city's 10 most spoken languages, resulting in essential materials, such as fact sheets about the COVID-19 vaccine failing to reach immigrant communities. By bringing this work in-house, we can ensure compliance with Local Law 30, improve the quality and cost effectiveness of services, and provide high-quality city jobs for New Yorkers with language skills. I want to thank councilmembers De La Rosa, Marte, Brandon, Narcisse, Brewer, Ung, and Gutierrez for introducing this bill alongside me, and you will hear more from me over email. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now hear from Councilmember Rivera, followed by Councilwoman Caban.
Thank you so much. Today I'm proud to introduce several pieces of legislation, including a permanent open culture program with Councilmember Osay, which will bring arts and culture to our streets and public spaces, making our vitrocultural institutions more accessible to all New Yorkers. Also, legislation to ensure proper language access at polling sites with Councilmember Aviles, protecting and enhancing the most sacred of our rights, our right to vote, reporting on the medical care and outcomes of incarcerated people, and finally, a resolution recognizing animals as sentient beings entitled to respect, consideration, and protection from abuse. In recent years, the council has done amazing work on animal rights, and this resolution memorializes for our city what we've all come to know, that animals are worthy of dignity and humane treatment. It also calls on the state to pass legislation, as in Oregon, which recognizes the state's responsibility to animal welfare. I always say how we treat animals is a reflection of our society, and I hope my colleagues will support this resolution. The work that we do here in the council affects not just the 8 million New Yorkers in this city, but everyone in the country, and I am so proud of the package of bills we're passing today, and of course, the legislation that I have introduced and that my colleagues have introduced, and so we can continue to be a model for the rest of the nation. I want to, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. Congratulations on this historic and landmark legislation we've passed today, and I hope you will join me in signing on to my bills. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now hear from Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Marte, followed by Councilwoman Brooks-Powers.
Thank you. I'm proud to be introducing two resolutions today. Resolution 257 declaring solidarity with workers organizing unions across the city, and Resolution 256 calling upon Washington to pass and enact the COVID-19 Longhauling Act. You know, as the price of food, fuel, medicine, energy, rent, and other essential purchases continue to soar, the billionaire classes extracting profits hand over fist, with their wealth going up by almost $2 trillion during the pandemic. Workers are standing up and saying they won't take it anymore, and the number of filings for union elections are up 56% this fiscal year compared to 2021. And the same bosses reaping the most exorbitant windfall profits are employing the dirtiest, most gutter-scraping, union-busting tactics. And it won't work because we stand with the workers and, you know, clearly and without apology. And so, you know, this is about saying that New York is a union town. For the long COVID resolution, 20% to 30% of all people infected with COVID will develop lasting symptoms, some which may be temporary, but others which may be chronic, some which may be mild, others which may be-- may be mild, others which may be debilitating. And so to understand the enormity of this problem, consider that cases are currently skyrocketing with the most infectious variant yet, which provides little to no immunity against reinfection, even for those who are fully vaccinated, and we continue to destroy every last shred of public health protections we ever had. This will go down in history as a mass-disabling event, and our health care system is not currently capable of absorbing the crush. And so we need Washington to act, to act now and to act boldly. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we go to Councilmember Marte, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you. Storefront vacancies are abundant in Chinatown, Lower East Side because of the devastating economic impact of the pandemic had on low-income communities. Our neighborhoods need investment in order to recover, but instead, tech company vouchers have swooped in to pick at our wombs. So today, I'm honored to introduce with Councilmember Menon a package of legislation to regulate 15-minute delivery apps and their micro fulfillment center, commonly known as dark stores. My two bills, Intro 579 and Intro 580, will help protect delivery workers that are exploited by these companies. By setting weight limits on orders, we are protecting workers' bodies and health and increasing their chances of survival in case of a traffic incident. But to stop traffic accidents, we have to stop the inhumane 15-minute delivery promise. Our second bill will require disclosure of delivery time estimates to take pressure off of workers to meet this intense time burden demand. Our bodegas, small businesses, and delivery workers have suffered a lot from the pandemic, while companies like GoPuff and Gorillas have used our crisis to launch their platforms. Micro fulfillment center and 15-minute delivery apps are trying to flip our immigrant neighborhoods into storage yards for Silicon Valley. This legislative package is a central crackdown on this tech-backed exploitation of our city's storefront vacancy, crisis, our delivery workers, and our immigrant-owned bodegas and 99-cent stores. Thank you, Asian American Federation and Los Delaristas Unidos for their advocacy on this issue, and thank you to Councilmember Menon for partnering on this important legislation with me.
Thank you. And I go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, and last, we'll go to Councilmember Wrestler to finish us off.
Thank you. Tried us again, but I just wanted to speak briefly on the bill I'm introducing with my colleague, Councilwoman Rita Joseph, which will ban the sale of flavored cigarettes. We are all aware of the serious health impacts that smoking can cause, and these effects are borne disproportionately by communities of color, and especially younger adults, who have long been targeted by advertising campaigns and ease of access. This bill will improve health outcomes and reduce the risk of smoking among vulnerable New Yorkers. I encourage my colleagues to sign on as cosponsors. I'd also be remiss if I did not thank Councilmember Williams for submitting Mrs. Renee Blueford to be added to the already implemented street coname for David Blueford. The two married couples were a staple in the southeast Queens community, and we treasured and valued them dearly, and they are certainly missed. And so it is definitely appropriate for the honor to now have the Renee and David Blueford street co-naming. And I also extend my condolences to the family of Joe Goldblum as well, who's a staple in southeast Queens community. He didn't live there, but we should have probably a street in southeast Queens resurrected for him because he has definitely been someone who has dedicated his life in service, but especially to the southeast Queens community. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we'll go to Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I'll just say very briefly that it's an honor to be a part of this institution today with this historic and landmark package, and I especially want to congratulate each of the prime sponsors on putting together such a compelling package of bills to protect reproductive rights for folks across this country here in New York City. Secondly, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Barron that we have work to do to restore the education cuts, and I wanted to thank the Speaker for her leadership on the letter this week and really hope that we can continue to put the utmost pressure on the mayor to restore these cuts. Today, I designated more than $200,000 in member-based initiatives to support elementary schools in District 33 to try to help fill gaps, but we have much, much more work to do there. And then lastly, I just wanted to express my gratitude to a member of my team who we were able to convince to join us on an interim basis, Jesse Towson. He was the Chief of Staff to another member of the council for the last eight years, and he agreed to help transition us into the body and show us the ropes, and myself, my Chief of Staff, Marian Alexander, and our whole team are greatly appreciative of Jesse's service. He's going on to a great job at Goddard Riverside, so he'll be working with you, Gail, if she's not here anymore, but he'll be working with the good folks on the Upper West Side. But he's been a tremendous asset to me and to our whole district and our staff, and I really want to thank him for, you know, helping to just get our, to help show us the ropes. So thank you, Jesse, and best of luck to you in the future.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Before we close the meeting, I definitely, too, want to acknowledge an uplift. As former Councilmember I, Danique Miller, used to call him the great Joe Goldblum. Joe was an amazing man. He wanted the best for New York and all New Yorkers, and especially, he loved southeast Queens and loved so many of us that he took under his wings for so many years. Joe is already missed, but he will be sorely missed as we continue on our walk on this journey. I've just been given word that his services will be this Monday, the 18th, at 11:00 a.m. We'll send the information to our council membership. Thank you all very much. The stated meeting of July 14, 2022, is hereby adjourned.